The visa. I see Dennis.
All right, everyone, we're gonna just get started and if anyone else joins, we'll update them. All right, good evening to the public meeting of the City of Lowell Zoning Order Appeals for May 28. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the meeting will not come in person and it will be streaming live on LCC and people can participate virtually through their phone and through the website provided. All right, under Continued Business, under ZB-2020, the petition type is a special permit. The option is Harrison Bonner, probably located at 464 Central Street. Harrison Bonner has applied to Zoning Order Appeals for a special permit approval to convert an existing five-unit residential building into a six-unit residential building. He's properly located in the traditional David McHugh zoning district, 464 Central Street, requires special permit approval under section 4.5, alter any existing non-conforming structure and for any other relief required of the Lowell zoning ordinance. Is the Alpin here this evening?
Yes, Harrison Bonner here.
So go ahead, Mr. Bonner, the floor is yours, sir.
Great, thank you. I will address, I'll just address straight to the parking concern, which I believe was the main concern that we wanted to address after the feedback from the first meeting a couple of weeks ago. So I'll address that specifically and then if there's anything else in addition to that that I'm missing or any other questions, feel free to ask. I have to add to the plot plan that was created to mark where we could dimensions for parking spaces that we could then mark and designate for individual units. As you guys can see from the parking plan, it's a relatively tight driveway as you pull down the right side of the building. I don't know if there's actually an official easement because the property line does run down the middle of that drive space, but it's, that's what's used driveway. And then I have space here for six parking spaces, one for each unit. We tried to lay out a couple of different ways with parking spaces facing directly to the back of the property angled as well as kind of a mix. And this was the best, we felt the best that we could come up with to allow for turnaround space in either direction that made the most sense. So the tenants or parkers of the use of the space, you pull straight down the driveway and then you have 90-degree parking spaces, six of them. And then you have that, that space that you use for pulling in and out of the parking spaces for turnaround space as well, if you want to drive forward out of the parking area. So that's, that's the most we were able to squeeze back there was six, which is, I was hoping for at least five, you know, before it was officially marked, you know, I didn't want to say for certain, but I was glad we were able to show six regulation-sized parking spaces. And then someone had mentioned a really good idea of potentially asking surrounding business owners or other landlords kind of in the area if there were any extra parking spaces that we could work to agree to lease parking spaces with the tenants. Due to a lot of the local businesses being closed, we weren't really able to contact anyone specifically. It's still something we like to continue to, to work with potential local businesses on. But I did kind of, the scouting, if you will, of the surrounding area for myself. And I submitted another document that kind of shows where our building is on Google Maps and kind of in relation to the overall neighborhood and an area that I particularly noticed that's only about two blocks away as you drive up Central Street into downtown. There's always seems to be a little bit more abundance of parking. So I do understand that the neighborhood is definitely tough to park in, but with Central Street itself being a bit of a busier road, I mean, kind of being once that, a little bit closer to that downtown area, I felt like that there were a couple of spots that will make parking for that particular building a little bit easier. But yeah, we were able to show the six and there's not really any additional landscaping we can do, it's all currently paved. So we wouldn't be adding any pavement, we would just be marking the parking lots.
Is that all the updates and comments you have right now, Mr. Bonner?
Yes, sir.
Perfect, just at the point of information and logistics and for public record. Again, this is member Peck speaking. Please identify yourself when you're speaking and also just as a form of information for public record, we have four members on tonight, Mr. McCarthy, Member Bier and Mr. Callahan. And also a point of information, Mr. McCarthy did review the footage of the last meeting. So he is also eligible to vote tonight on this matter, this Continued Business. So with that being said, I'm just gonna open up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? In favor? All right, hearing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? Hearing none, that, that portion of the public hearing is closed. We're gonna open up comments and questions to the board members now. The chair recognizes Member Bier. Mr. Bier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mark Bier speaking. The number of compliant parking spaces prior to the submission of this petition was how many?
I'm sorry, off the top of my head for this particular parcel, I don't remember the parts. Of course, you know, I'm an existing five family that had previously been a six family. The previous owners converted it to a five so they can live in one of the larger units. And we're just positioning to change it back to a six without changing the footprint of the building itself.
So the number, the number of parking spaces prior to this petition were how many?
Official parking spaces, it was more, because, sorry, I missed the question. I would say it was more or less unofficial because there are no marked lines. The property was like when it was, when it was acquired. So we would be, we would be adding those marked spaces, official marked spaces.
So under your revised parking plan, the number of compliant parking spaces would be how many?
Would be six.
And you, and we, we had determined at the last meeting that even though those, those spots weren't official or compliant, they weren't designated, how many cars were parking back there?
When there is, we probably have about five, we've had at most five back there just with different employees and tradesmen on site because the building is actively under construction. But I've never occupied, I've never, under, under my ownership, the building has never been fully occupied with tenants, so to that I can't speak on.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'll defer next further comment and pass the baton to one of my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Bier. All right, the chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you very much, this is Dennis McCarthy. I'd like to, to Mr. Chairman, ask a few questions here of the revised site plan, which I see recognizes six spaces that are 18 feet by eight foot six inches wide. But giving you basically a turning area in that parking port backing out that's relatively tight, only 16 feet, which isn't even the length of a full parking space. But that being said, you are indicating that the parking goes into the area that currently is labeled chain link fence, as though the fence is going to be modified or removed. Can you speak to that? Is that, is that, is there a plan for the fence?
That's, that's a great question. I would, so I was under the assumption actually that chain link fence was right on our property line. So they, the surveyors marked the end of the parking space, I believe at three feet from the property line, which was the, I don't know, it's the requirement for the parcel. So for that chain link fence, it would be modified if it, if there are no other obstructions to move it and have clearance for the parking spaces. But there could potentially need to be an amendment to this.
Right, I'd like to see if we do go forward with this, that there's a condition that you work with DPD to develop a plan indicating the revised location of the chain link fence and also identifying space between the edge of parking and the property line that would remain pervious if that currently is the condition. All right, the second question I had is a location for recycling and trash bins. I don't see anything indicating that on the plan right now, not quite sure how that is handled today. Can you help me understand what you currently have for plans for that for a six family?
Sure, it's, the trash barrels are currently stored, if you're looking at the bulkhead just to the left. So there's a couple tucked around that back left corner of the building and then along the backside of the building, again, to the, kind of towards the left of the bulkhead. It's all, it's all paved space.
And is there a private service that empties those? Or is there another, I'm assuming it's a private service for a six family?
There's currently only one tenant and I haven't done anything in terms of taking over any sort of contracts, so they've just continued to take out their trash as normal. But I'm not aware of any private service, but that could have been the case.
I believe in the City of Lowell for a six family, you'd be responsible for a private service.
Okay.
And if that's the case, would you still have individual barrels for each tenant? Or would you have these smaller rolling dumpster pieces that kind of get rolled out to the front of the building and, you know, the trucks kind of remove, remove the material and then roll them back?
Sure, so I actually have another six family that we're working on in Brockton. And it's a similar, it's a similar case where there's a private trash service and they have individual barrels.
Okay, well, if that's your plan, I'd like to see as a condition that you work with DPD to develop the location that makes more sense and if it's up against the bulkhead area, that, that's fine, but we need to have that identified on the site plan, I think. And then another condition is to, well, first you tell me how is snow being removed in the winter with such a shortage of parking and a very tight drive aisle? I'm not sure where the snow storage would happen on the site.
There would be, there's a little bit of space kind of in that back corner. I guess it all depends on, you know, how bad the snow is, as to whether it would all fit back there. So maybe this past winter, we might be able to, but if it was a winter of 2015, then we would be, we would just remove it off-site instead of just plowing it to the back.
All right, so you're suggesting the, so I'm looking at the north arrow here, the northeast corner of the site would be identified as snow storage?
Yes.
Okay, then I'd like to see that as a condition that you revise the site plan and indicate snow storage. I think you should work with DPD to make sure that's adequate. Often in the past with sites like this, we've made a condition that you remove the snow from the parking area in the winter rather than store it on-site. But I'm not sure if there's an adequate snow storage. So that, that would be one other thing that I'd like to just kind of bring up. You do have on-street parking on Central Street on your side of the street there, I think for one space maybe, is that correct?
That's correct, there is currently a 30-yard dumpster in front of the building and there's a little bit of space on either side of it. So if that was removed, then there would be, I'd say, two parking spaces on, right, directly in front of the building on that building side, yes. And there, there's also parking on the other side of the street, there's a couple handicap spaces, so.
Right, right, right. I think dimensionally, you're only gonna get one parking space for the city parking dimensions, for street parking. If you're only 38 feet wide and you have five feet given away to the drive access that's an easement or whatever, then not only is your 33 feet, I think the on-street parking is at least 18 if not 20. So I don't think you get two spaces on there, I think you only get one. But that being said, we still have that, I think, going for this building. And the fact that the building clearly, from a layout standpoint, was intended to be a six family, was used as a six family up until recently, I think this is probably as good as it gets to resolve some of these parking issues, create a condition that resolves the snow storage and the, and the fence and the trash receptacles. So I like it as a project. I like the fact that the building clearly was a six family at one time and was modified recently, so that's all I have. The rest of my board members would support me with those conditions, thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. McCarthy, thank you for those comments. Again, this is Member Peck, the, the chair recognizes Mr. Callahan. Mr. Callahan, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this is Sean Callahan from ZBIA. Through you, Mr. Chairman, yeah, Mr. Bonner, I thank you for doing the revision, providing the parking spaces, that was obviously the main concern we had at the last, at the last meeting, because we're on the, it's a tight squeeze there with the parking with central, back central street area. And we've been having a lot of, we've been having a lot of projects in that area, which is great, it's revitalizing that area, but the parking is obviously a big holdup with everybody. But I do appreciate you going back and providing us with plans that show the parking spaces and also that you made efforts to try to get, obtain other alternative parking. I understand it's, you know, almost, it's a tough, tough to go at this point right now being the conditions that everybody's in, but I would encourage you to continue to try to do that. That would be a benefit to the tenants if you could try to, continue to try to work with other, other local businesses to see if you can lease some parking, that would be, that would be great. But other than that, I agree, I agree with Dennis's conditions, if you're in agreement with that. The only one thing I would probably add is considering the parking issue, maybe you want to kind of get a gauge in how things are working. I think, and I'll listen, my other fellow board members are in agreement, I would suggest that maybe an administrative review. Understanding the situation, usually we go six months, but maybe you're looking, maybe possibly go eight months. You only had one tenant, you said, presently?
Yes, that's correct, and they are currently, they've been working with, I believe, some subsidized housing, they were left over from the used owner, and I believe they have approval for some subsidized housing they had been wanting to move into, have been trying to move into for a while and took over ownership and, and were, you know, we wanted to keep them there until they, they were able to do that. So I believe we are moving into that in a couple of months.
Yeah, okay, but maybe I would probably suggest maybe an eight-month, eight-month administrative review because you only have one tenant there, you start getting more people coming in, hopefully, if things change, and then that would be a better gauge as to how the parking situation may be playing out. And then we could try to see where we can work, if there's something we can work with there. It's just more for the board to keep, to keep a track on how that's gonna affect the, affect the area as far as the parking is concerned. So that would be my only other suggestion along with Dennis's conditions on that, but I think it's, it's a great project and I'm glad you went back to the drawing board and provided us more clarity on the parking, which is very important for us, especially in the back central area, and I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Callahan. So, you know, again, this is Van Peck, I agree with my colleague, you know, thank you, Mr. Bonner, with the updated plans and parking layout and, you know, the definite pick spots that you have on-site, I think it eases my concerns as well. And also to Mr. Callahan's point and to Mr. McCarthy's point, I would also like to see you continue to look for any additional shared parking or any other, you know, parking off-site leave, so, parking, just to leave any traffic and parking concerns that is, that is a tight neighborhood. And I'm also in favor of the conditions of Mr. McCarthy laid out. So overall, I think, I think, you know, this petition does meet the merits for a special permit. So, Mr. Bonner, just a point of information and, and to the public, there's four members on tonight, so you would need a four, all four, all votes in favor to move your project along or it would be fatal. You also have the option to, you know, continue until there's more members as well. Are you okay with moving forward with, with the vote tonight with all the members currently and with the conditions mentioned for this project, Mr. Bonner?
Yes, thank you, I'm comfortable moving forward.
Okay, so we'll, we'll go forward with the vote. Can, can we just have a motion for ZB-2024 special permit?
Yeah, I just want to read the, read the conditions, Mr. Bonner, make sure we're in agreement with that and then I'll go forward, we'll both present the motion. So, the conditions are, number one, advocate to work with DPD for relocation of chain link fence and to identify any pervious areas in that area with chain link fence would be. Two is to work with DPD to develop a location for trash removal and a snow removal plan as well as provide revised plans accordingly, demonstrating where those, those locations are. And then three would be eight-month administrative. Are you in agreement with those?
Yes, thank you, I am in agreement.
Dennis, I got, Dennis, I got those right, right?
So I was actually asking, the first condition for the space beyond the paved area to remain impervious, unpervious rather, so that we would have some space on the site that wouldn't be paved?
I think if I recall, Mr. Bonner.
What's that?
If I recall, Mr. Bonner, Mr. Bonner, maybe you can correct me, the last meeting, I think Mr. Bonner represented last meeting that the whole property is paved, correct?
The entire back area is paved, that's, that's correct, but it could just be up to the chain link fence, I guess I wasn't looking at that chain link fence because it's so faint. I was assuming that was the lot line, so sorry, I briefly missed that. But I will, I'll have, when we revise the site plan, I'll have the surveyor note where the pervious and impervious areas are and where exactly the pavement may start and stop in case it's, if it's different, I'll be sure to add those details.
Okay, that's, that's satisfactory, right, Dennis?
That'll do, that'll, yes.
Okay, just double checking, all right, great. All right, so with that, through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB-2020 for 464 Central Street for a special permit under section 4.5, convert an existing five unit residential building to a six unit residential building with the previously read conditions.
Can we get a second to that motion?
I'll second the motion.
All right, motion by Mr. Callahan, second by Mr. McCarthy, can we have a roll call, please?
Vice Chairman Peck.
Approved with condition.
Member Callahan.
Approved with conditions.
Member Bier.
Approved with conditions.
Member McCarthy.
Approved with conditions.
All right, Mr. Bonner, you've been approved with your project, we wish you the best of luck, have a good evening, sir.
Great, thank you very much, everyone, for your time and for listening to the petition and look forward to working with the departments to get the conditions revised addressed.
Great, thank, thank you, Mr. Bonner, have a good evening. All right, under, we'll move along on the new business, ZB-2020-25. The petition is a variance, the option is ACC Realty LLC, the property located at 128 Manchester Street. The petition seeks to give you variance, we will construct a single-family home on a vacant lot at 128 Manchester Street, lot in a traditional two-family zoning district and building a home requires grant approval under section 5.1 for minimum lot size, minimum lot area per dwelling unit, shortage and minimum front yard setback under section 6.1.10 for maximum curb cut and for any other relief required of the Lowell zoning ordinance. Is the petitioner here this evening?
Yes, Mr. Van Peck, this is Attorney George Fieadoru, 133 Market Street, representing the petitioner. And also with me tonight is Amor of Landflex. This, this petition seeks to go and build a single-family home at 128 Manchester Street as stated. The lot is a vacant, overgrown lot at the present time, it is unsightly and we propose to build a single-family home with the required parking. The, the comments from the city that we received were very, very favorable and I went through my narrative, some of them are parallel with what I stated. And, uh, uh, if I went through my narrative, uh, some of them are parallel with what I stated in how the development of this property and a single-family home on this lot, uh, fits in with the, uh, with the neighborhood. Now, given the current zoning, I understand that it is the six thousand square foot minimum. However, when we look at the lot sizes, uh, immediately adjacent to this property is seventeen hundred square feet. And then right around the corner on Quebec Street, one twelve Quebec Street, it's twenty-three hundred square feet. So, uh, this, this does fit in, uh, with the, uh, with the, uh, size of the lot in the neighborhood, uh, as well as the, uh, the frontage, uh, of that requirements in the neighborhood right now. We have sixty point nine four feet of frontage, which is, which is in compliance to the, uh, the duplexes which are across the street. Now granted, those came in and which fell at a different time. However, we're dealing with, with the, uh, the situation that we have before us right now. Uh, and that's why we're asking for these variances and what it will do will permit to construct this property on this lot and still comply or, or be in harmony with the neighborhood. What I wanted to point out was something that was a, a, a mistake in the, uh, in the architectural plan that labeled one of the, the, uh, rooms on the second floor as the, as third bedroom. Uh, that is la- should be labeled and completed as a study. And it is my understanding that the, uh, City of Lowell Building Code permits a room to be labeled and categorized for building purposes as a study by removing the cloth. Uh, so I asked the board to take this into consideration. Uh, it's something that we're, we're, we're in compliance, we would be in compliance with the building code. And this permits for a very good layout of this property, of these plans for that structure on the lot. I do see that we, uh, one thing that looks, that one of the nicest things about this lot, there's a beautiful shade tree. I don't know if it's a red maple right on the corner, but these shade trees we've been able to work around and keep on the property. Uh, we've been able to, uh, install the, uh, the, uh, infiltration trenches to, to, to take care of the, 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 some of the drainage, the, uh, the rain runoff on the property. Uh, and, uh, uh, I asked the board to, uh, uh, give us their support in this. We have not heard from anyone in the neighborhood. Again, it's, uh, an unsightly lot that the improvement that we would, uh, have with putting a single-family house on this lot, uh, would vastly improve the neighborhood. Yeah, so, uh, we would ask for your support in granting these variances to go forward.
Um, thanks, thank you, Mr. Uh, the counselor for, for the update, Mr. Theodore. So, so right now, we're going to open to the public, um, for, for the, uh, public input. So, anyone wishing to speak in favor of petition, in favor, in favor, hearing. Hearing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed. Open up the, uh, public portion to, uh, anyone who'd like, like suspicion, like to, like to speak in opposition, in opposition, in opposition, hearing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed. Um, we're going to open up comments, um, and questions from the board member. So the chair recognizes, um, Mr. McCarthy, Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I have a couple of questions, um, the applicant through you. Um, I'd just like to talk a little bit about the, um, uh, Paper Street, Porter Street, which, um, is an unusual condition to this lot. Um, and it's something that is, um, built on by some of the adjacent properties, which I'm not quite sure how that is possible. Is, is, is the Paper Street something that is, uh, going to remain as a space that would never be built on?
Well, uh, you know, that, that's a good question. Uh, the, uh, the Paper Street that exists there, uh, is not something that we are using as far as the dimensions for our lot. Nor would it be something that we could use because as you know, the Paper Street, uh, we don't own the Paper Street. However, we would have rights if we petitioned the city along with the adjacent property owner at one thirty-eight Manche- uh, one thirty-six Manchester Street to petition the city council to abandon that portion of the Paper Street. That would only mean that the city of Lowell abandoned their right to that Paper Street. Uh, it doesn't mean that we would be granted good title to that property because we don't know really who owns it. We know that the city has rights to it as a Paper Street and they could relinquish those rights to us. But we, we don't know who has superior title to that. Now, when people go ahead and do that and they abandon, they petition the city to abandon their rights to it, a lot of times they do that so they could have control of that property and they expand their yard for gardening purposes. But from a legal standpoint, uh, at least in my practice, we never advise anybody, we, we, we never advise anybody to build on it and certainly we don't advise them to make any use of that for frontage or square footage. Um, so that, that, uh, we could conceivably go to the city to ask them to abandon it along with the other neighbor on the other side. Uh, I don't know if, if, if the current owner or the future owners would intend to do that, but it's certainly within their rights.
I, I certainly like the idea. I, I don't see how that street would be developed because if you look at the GIS map, there's a number of properties that seem to have structures on the Paper Street. Um, and I just don't see why, go ahead.
They, 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 they do. Uh, I don't have an explanation for that. And, uh, however, uh, there could be, there could have been a time where, I, I don't know, I didn't research it to, to that extent, but they could have possibly, uh, asked the city to, uh, both, both parties on either side to abandon the rights in it. And maybe they felt that they could build on it and encroach on it. Um, but I don't think it's a good idea.
Right, I, I don't, I'm, 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 the way I'm looking at this is that half of that Paper Street, in my opinion, could be considered part of this lot down the road or whenever, yeah, as a minimum. And that helps with the ratio disparity and the frontage, in my opinion.
That's true. They, they, they could, they conceivably go ahead and ask the city to abandon because each party has rights up to the middle of that Paper Street. They could conceivably do that.
So, so that's how I'm looking at this proposal to help me with the fact that we're so far undersized. And looking at the site plan that was provided, um, the numbers on the site plan regarding setback is quite different than what's required by zoning. And I just was wondering if we could just speak to that a little bit, especially that five-foot front yard setback.
Oh, you know, I think I'm going to ask Matt Hammer to, to, to answer that question for us.
I would love to hear from that. I think he needs to unmute maybe a little bit there.
Yeah, unmuted, Mr. Hammer.
Uh, good evening, uh, Mr. McCarthy and members of the board. For the record, Matt Hammer with Landflex Engineering, ten George Street Hall. Um, I can say we've, um, we were floating around a few, uh, proposals for, uh, dwelling on this property. And, uh, we came to the, uh, conclusion that, um, requesting a variance for that five-feet, uh, setback would be more conducive to getting a, a house on, a dwelling on the property, uh, that would be large enough in order to, um, to accommodate what the building wants to do on the property. And that's where we came up with that five feet to make the building actually more narrow at twenty-four feet by thirty-six feet, uh, which is a relatively small footprint. And respecting the, uh, the requirements that would be needed to get the two parking spaces, um, put into the property and to also try to get a, an area where, uh, vehicle can navigate their way in and out of the parking spaces. And that's where we came up with the, the five-foot setback.
Matt, it seems as though the five-foot setback is compatible with other existing structures on the street, right?
Uh, that's correct. Um, if you, uh, you know, go to the other side of, uh, Port Street, um, the buildings are relatively close to the front setback there. Directly on the other side of the, uh, Paper Street, which, um, is currently being used as a driveway. I don't know if you noticed that on the plan, uh, as part of your question related to Porter Street. Um, that building itself is right on the setbacks. And the building further down at Quebec and Manchester, uh, is relatively close to one setback as well.
Right, uh, right. The, the buildings, Quebec, Court, Manchester, there's a number of existing dwellings that have a very close proximity to the front yard, to the front property line that is five feet or less. And so going to five feet, I think is very compatible to the existing fabric of the neighborhood. Even though it doesn't need zoning, I think that I would support it, um, because of the conditions that exist on adjacent properties on a number of adjacent properties. So, um, I think what you've done with the site plan has a lot of merit. Um, I'm not sure, we've had this on other, on other conversations, we've had this, um, additional paved surface area that you like to do as though you're negotiating the backing in area rather than going out onto Manchester Street, which seems to me just creating more, um, impervious material rather than really facilitating what I think people would use it for. Um, I just was wondering if that's something that's a must-have or if that's something that we could possibly improve the green area on the site and reduce the, um, impervious material.
Uh, yeah, we can most certainly do that. I have a, a habit of putting those in on many of my plans. Uh, and, um, it was something that used to be, uh, encouraged, uh, some years ago to try to create some additional areas, uh, for maneuverability if needed. But we most certainly could remove that. Uh, we would, um, maybe, um, just broaden the walkway a little bit out to the, uh, paved area, but we could most certainly, uh, remove that and create some additional.
Right, I think the, uh, modest size of the house, the fact that we have two parking spaces and the, um, um, reducing that, um, impervious material would, I think, create the, um, effect of something very similar to the rest of the fabric of the neighborhood. It's not even better because I think there's several properties in the neighborhood that are, um, have less green space available to them on their lots than what you're providing in this one. So, um, that's, that, those are my comments. Um, I'm glad we're seeing some landscaping, some shade trees on this and, um, glad you clarified the, uh, comment about the, um, number of bedrooms, um, on the site plan, on the floor plans. So, um, I, I like, I like.
Sorry.
Go ahead, say it again.
Before I add one other, uh, design element, we, uh, we wanted to, uh, move the house closer to the corner and, and to move the driveway away from the intersection. So, moving it closer to the front lot line and closer as far as we could to Court Street enabled that driveway to be closer away from the intersection of the intersection.
Nice. Very nice. Nice job. I, I liked it a lot. Um, enough for the questions.
Oh, great. Um, and thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Um, again, as a member of PEC. The, the chair recognizes, um, Mr. Briere, uh, Mr. Briere, the, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No questions.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. Briere. The, the chair recognizes, um, Mr. Callahan. Mr. Callahan, the floor is yours, sir.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Sean Callahan. Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. Uh, thank you for, uh, providing the, uh, clarification on the bedrooms. That was my one main, main question that I really had. But if, uh, you make sure that you submit, uh, plans that designate that site not a bedroom, just so we're clear on that, um, that'd be appreciated. Uh, I think one question that was, um, brought up by, uh, by DPD, uh, to inquire was regards to the driveway on, uh, that borders one thirty-six. I think they had mentioned something about possibly seeing if they could put some more, some sort of border or trees there or something to make sure that that's, is impervious. Is that something that, is that something that can be accomplished?
Uh, uh, Attorney Theodore speaking here, uh, Mr. Callahan. Uh, I, I think that's something that we can do. And, uh, and, uh, do, do it tastefully. Uh, so I don't think, you know, I, I, I think we could go ahead and do that.
Okay. All right, so probably add, uh, add that as a, you know, condition, uh, to provide new site plans that demonstrate, I don't know, trees or other landscaping or some sort of border between one of the property, on the property line adjacent to the driveway, uh, near one thirty-six, so. But other than that, um, yeah, this seems like a very, this seems like a very good project. I mean, it certainly is going to fit in with the rest of the neighborhood. A great job in de- designating that the relief that's being requested is, uh, there are other similar properties in the area that are well below the zoning requirements on that. Uh, so, uh, I think that, that's something that, uh, would go in your favor and, uh, that that would, uh, give me the, uh, that, that, that I can, that I can find, I can see myself, uh, agreeing to this as far, as long as we can go with the stipulations that, the condition that we've reached. Thank you, and I wish you the best of luck. Thanks.
Thank you.
Uh, so thank, thank you, Mr. Callahan. I, I think that, to me, this, um, this variant makes sense. You know, it, it, that, that empty lot or that big lot, it was pretty much an eyesore. So it's nice to see, you know, a single-family unit going up there and, you know, to, to your credit, Mr. Theodore and Mr. Hammer, um, that, the, the single-family home would fit in with the neighborhood and, and the character and so I do see, um, I do see merit to this petition. Just, just as a point of, um, clarification and, and just for the record, um, there's four members tonight, so, uh, all members have to, uh, vote in favor of the petition or it won't be approved. I just want to let you know that, uh, Mr. Theodore, and do you want to go forward with the vote tonight?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, we, we choose to go forward with the vote tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Um, and, and you're okay with the condition set forth with the, uh, the updated site plan, uh, in regards to the, the tree landscape for the adjacent property lot line?
Yes.
Actually, that, remember, um, uh, Chairman Pec, Vice Chairman Pec, um, if we could include in that condition the reduction of approximately fifty square feet of pavement adjacent to the front porch. Um, that's that, uh, yeah, okay, thank you.
Yes, we, we could add that as a condition. Are you okay with that condition, Mr. Theodore?
Uh, yeah, yes, we, I mean, that, that, um, Mr. McCarthy brought that up to take out that fur or that, that, that little turnaround there. And so, you know, we would go ahead and do that.
Okay, uh, per- perfect. So, uh, with that said, with, with, um, the, the previous conditions that, that were mentioned, um, can we have a, a motion for this variance, please?
Also, uh, updated rendering demonstrating the third bedroom is a study, not a, that, that as a condition as well. So, um, with that, uh, three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB twenty twenty dash twenty-five, one twenty-eight Manchester Street, uh, for variance approval under section five point one for maximum lot size, minimum lot area per dwelling unit, minimum frontage and minimum front yard setback. And under section six point one point ten for maximum cur- oh, you don't need that anymore, so we'll scrap that. Um, so just the, just the five point one variances with the. So just the, just the 5.1 variances with the conditions that the applicant is to provide updated site plan demonstrating the demonstrating the tree linings adjacent to the driveway and a reduction of the pavement spur adjacent to the front porch as well as updated renderings, turning the third bedroom into a study.
Can we just have a second to the motion, please?
Mark Brier seconds the motion.
All right, second round, Mr. Brier. Can we have a roll call, please?
Vice Chairman PEC.
Approved the conditions.
Member Callahan?
Approved the conditions.
Member Brier?
Approved with conditions.
Member McCarthy?
Approved with conditions.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Theodore and Mr. Hammer, you've been approved of conditions. Wish you the best of luck, sir.
Yeah, thanks so much.
Thank you very much, Chairman Van Pec, and have a very pleasant evening.
You as well. Thanks, thanks. And have a good evening. Thanks, thank you. All right, moving on to our next agenda item, talk on the new business. ZB-2020-26, the petition is a variance. The applicant is Peter Marlowe and Louis Gagnon. The property is located at 776 Lakeview Ave. The applicant has applied for special permit, site family view, and variance approval on behalf of Louis Gagnon at 776 Lakeview Ave. The applicant is seeking to convert the second and third floor of AG Hardware Store into ten residences. The property is in the neighborhood business. And the zoning district that proposed requires special permit approval for section 12.1E, site family view approval for section 11.4 from the planning board to create more than three dwelling units, variance approval from the zoning board per section 5.1 to exceed the maximum FAR and for any other relief required of the Lowell zoning ordinance. Good evening. Is the petitioner here this evening?
Yeah, I'm here.
Yeah, can you just name the address for the record, please?
Am I there?
Yeah, yeah, we hear you, sir. Just if you just say your name and the address for the record, sir.
Peter Marlowe, Marlowe Building and Design, 258 West Manchester Street, Lowell, Mass. I'm also wearing my best cologne tonight, so I hope you all enjoy it.
Thank you, Mr. Marlowe. Thank you.
I'm representing Louis and Amy Gagnon of AG Hardware. Louis reached out to me when he saw my project across from St. Louis Church, the six-unit building we did formerly known as the Alamo. Louis and Amy are here tonight online with us, along with Anthony Naganga, owner of Studio 2060, is the architectural firm he's located in Lowell, and the Gagnons have hired him to design the project. AG Hardware became a reality on Thursday, April 22, 1954, when Andre Gagnon opened the doors for the first time after securing financing, the O'Brien Paint Line, and a lot of elbow grease. Some of the critics thought he would only last six months, but Andre flew into the 60s without a hitch. The business was very busy and new product lines needed to be brought in. In the late 60s and 70s, Mr. Gagnon expanded to the upper floors to accommodate the new products and ever-increasing inventory. It seemed like he was adding on to the building every couple of years to make space. The development of AG Hardware would continue to grow without interruptions, and soon all transformations of multi-level store were visible. Just to note, all this was done with four young boys at home. In 1973, Andre purchased the adjoining building at 768 Lakeview Avenue. This became needed storage area to support the hardware store and also had apartments on, one-bedroom apartments on the upper level for added income. In 1986, in 1987, after thirty-three, successful thirty-three years, Andre retired. He left the legacy to two of his four sons, Paul and Louis. The boys, as they would affectionately call, started to model and upgrade the front of the store as well as bringing the hardware store into the computer age. They also had a kitchen endowed showroom on the second floor. AG Hardware became the go-to store for many landlords. In the early 90s, a third generation entered the business. Louis' children came to work at the store and learned all aspects of the industry. Louis' daughter Amy excelled at the business and worked her way up the ranks. Paul Gagnon retired in 2014, sold his ownership. His brother Louis, Amy, along with their dad, continue to run the business today. Back in the 60s and 70s, Lowell had hardware stores in every section of the city. With the influx of the big box stores, started to see these close one by one. In fact, with the closing of McKittrick Hardware in the past two years, AG Hardware is now the only independent store left in the city. It has not always been easy, but with Louis' daughter Amy at the helm, it weathered the storm. Today, AG Hardware is still the go-to store for many locals. With the popularity of online purchases, the store has been steadily decreasing its need for inventory. They have downsized to the first and lower level of the store. Also, their cabinet line, which was stood next door at their other building, now ships directly to customers. Now, 2020 is a ride, and with all these changes, they would like to create ten one-bedroom units on the vacant second and third floors. This would create another revenue stream. We have now come full circle due to the fact that this building was a mixed-use structure back in the 1900s. And I had sent you a photo showing what it looked like back then. The Gagnons currently have forty-seven parking spaces adjacent to the main store with plenty of expansion if needed. They also have ample space for snow removal. Building they own adjacent to the property at 768 Lakeview Avenue has eight one-bedroom apartments. These are all one-bedrooms. So as you can see, the parking for this project is more than efficient. External lighting will be addressed along with the architectural plans. Anthony Naganga will be taking care of that and will create the proposed design and will produce a final set once the project gets its approvals. Traffic flow, landscaping, environment will have no impact on this project due to the fact that most of the work is being done internally, with some exterior work changing the facade and adding windows. The utilities for the building have been upgraded over the years and more than sufficient for the ten apartments. Louis has retained us, Marlowe Building and Design, to help navigate through this permit process and oversee the development. And Louis and Amy's commitment to the area over the years has made a very positive impact on the entire neighborhood and will going through it. One of the many photos I have supplied tonight is our most recent completed project at 27 West Third Street. Along with my partner, David Deegan, this project was approved by the city boards in 2018 and was completed this month and is 70% occupied. Twenty-one residential apartments, this project has added a lot to a depressed neighborhood, and we gave a lot of special attention to details to enhance the area. I would like to mention that Anthony Naganga was also the architect for this project. One other photo was the original AG Hardware in the 50s that I mentioned previously. I will close now, but I do have many answers to questions that were brought forth by the board departments. And along with Anthony, I think we can answer all those sufficiently for everybody. So there.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Marlowe, for that narrative. All right, so now we're going to open up the petition to the public hearing portion of the, of the agenda. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the petition? In favor? Yeah, go, go ahead. Okay, hearing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? Hearing none of that portion of the public hearing is closed. We're going to open up questions and comments to the board. The chair recognizes Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mark Brier speaking. Mr. Marlowe, I would direct you to the comments from the city, in particular, number 12. I'd be interested in your comments with respect to the, the city advising to construct a sidewalk or some other means of crosswalk from the proposed property to the parking area.
Yes, and that's something we can work with the department, the engineering department on. We'd have to work, Pat Flaherty wasn't available to make some changes for me under there. But those are issues that I can work with the city engineer and Pat Flaherty on to be able to create, you know, what they're looking for in that area.
So I, I, I hear that as saying there's absolutely no objection?
No, none.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Marlowe.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. Brier. The chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. I have a lot of questions to ask here, but I do want to just say that the projects you provided to the city, both as an architect and as a construction team, have been amazing. And I am just very grateful to the two of you for doing that. I can only see this project being one more opportunity to showcase your talent and to benefit the city with your work. So I really look forward to this going forward. There are an awful lot of comments from the city of Lowell here. And to read through them in this meeting, I think, would be a lot of time and effort. It seems as though there's a missing piece here with a civil engineer maybe addressing them directly. And we don't have a civil engineer as part of the presenting team tonight. Is that correct?
No, Pat Flaherty was not available.
Well, I really feel that the comments do need to be addressed. And I don't know how to, in my mind, move forward without a continuance because of the extensive nature of the comment that seem to be relevant for what's being presented here. Although I'm sure that they can be resolved. I just don't see how we could possibly put a condition for the extensive nature of these comments to be resolved by TPD and do that in, in my mind, in a manner that would, would honor the, my, my job as a member of the zoning board. So
Can I just point out that
Please do.
I sent out, I sent you the, the plan, the civil plan with some added comments on there. And they talked about snow removal. He owns so much land. He's got additional, he owns land to the left of the building next door he owns. This is all continuous parcels. He's got so much snow removal, more than anybody around there, and he's got more parking that's necessary. It can be reconfigured easily to create the forty-three spaces he needs and to make them sizable. I was hoping that they would make a condition. One of the other things I did, they talked about stormwater. Because we're not adding to the building, I didn't think stormwater was an issue, whereas we're just, we're not putting any foundation work at all. So I didn't think stormwater came into that, but I would speak to her as, you know, to that. But I was hoping that I could work with her and Pat Flaherty to develop a plan that was acceptable as part of the conditions. Because there's so much space to deal with.
I'm with you 100% on the fact that you have every opportunity imaginable to resolve all these conditions. I agree. I'm not saying that you can't do that. It's that as I read through these conditions, the lacking information on the site plan that was presented is significant. And you're not providing us with a tool to resolve these conditions other than to say, there's plenty of room to do it. I'm sure we can work it out. I personally feel uncomfortable in going forward with a supportive vote tonight in that, in that manner. I feel it's important for civil engineer to address these conditions on a plan that resolves them to some extent, if not completely. And I think they can be.
Yeah.
But it's substantial. Unfortunately, but I love the project and I'm sure you're the right people to do it.
Yeah, part of the issue too is trying to meet with the, under the circumstances, the city engineer too. But I'll have to do a Zoom conference or go to a meeting with her and Pat Flaherty.
Frankly, I haven't, I don't remember a project that has kind of this kind of lengthy comments from the city to the board. But I, I know that it's, you said the right thing. You've got plenty of land available to resolve these issues, and I agree with you. I just need to have a site plan that supports the city bylaws and requirements, in my opinion. So I, I frankly, it has a continuance.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
No further questions.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. McCarthy for your comments. The chair recognizes Mr. Callahan. Mr. Callahan, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Sean Callahan. Three, Mr. Chairman. I mean, I, I like what's looking to be accomplished, but I'm kind of curious. When I look at the plans, I mean, why are we going with ten units? I mean, what's the, what's the purpose on that? Because they're kind of, I'm looking at a you got two seven, one seven fifty-nine, one seven hundred, or two, what's she, if you're going two floors. I'm presuming, I'm presuming, let me just go back, Mr. Marlowe, presuming the plan you sent us with regards to the floor renderings?
Yes.
They are going to be similar second and third floor, correct?
Right, they're identical.
So there's going to be, so there's going to be two units seven fifty-nine, two units seven hundred, two units five sixty-two, two units five ninety-four, and two units of five eighty-two. Now, I get a little Larry when I start seeing smaller units. I mean, it's kind of and, and one question I start thinking about is like, where's the storage? What's, I mean, what if these people have things, have things to store? And I don't see, especially in the smaller units, I see limited closet space. So I, I don't know. I guess my question is, why are we going with ten units? Why can't they be bigger? Why can't they be bigger units with a little bit more storage? And I guess the second question is, where is, where is the storage? If we have to stick, if this is the plan, where is, where is the storage going to be for people that have stuff that need additional space for storage?
Louis, when we sat down, Louis requested all one-bedroom units because he has a specific clientele that he rents to. This building does have an elevator. So he has a clientele that he rents to, and they tend to be an older clientele, and he rents all one-bedrooms to them. So that works out pretty well for him. The, the closets, I specifically, if you look at these, I specifically had the closets taken out, and I can show you what I do. Louis is a, sells cabinets for a living. So what we do in these bedroom units is we install drawer bases with cabinets up above for storage, and it takes up less room, and it allows the people to come in and not even have to buy furniture. The drawers are already in place and the ammaz are up above. So we've been doing a lot of apartments like that. I did West Third Street like that, and people love it. They walk in, put a bed down, they've got drawers already, they've got hanging inside, and it works out very well. I even did it on West, West Sixth Street the same way. So we're putting a lot of built-ins in, especially where he can buy these wholesale. That's why you don't see physical drawn closets in place.
Well, and I guess the next, also, yeah, I'm like, so I guess those little spaces that appear to be closets, are those what's supposed to be like in-house laundry units? Is that what they are?
Those are furniture units.
Furniture units as in?
Drawers and upper, upper hanging. And I, I can, I can And I I can, I can submit that to you to show you exactly what our plan is for that, too.
Okay.
Yeah.
And Because, because, yeah, I'm I'm looking at this again. Go ahead, uh, Mr. Nganga. I hope I pronounced that right.
Yeah, that's okay. Just for the record, this is Anthony Nganga, uh Studio twenty-six, located at one seventy-five Carbo Street, Lowell. And um, thank you again for, it's, it's always nice to be, you know, to meet you guys and present a project. And I, to comment on uh maybe not necessarily on the sizes, but actually uh Louis and Amy, the building right next door, that's exactly what they have for accommodation. They're all one-bedroom units. And he feels very strongly that that's a market that he's able to um accommodate, and he knows that that customer very well. Um, and then the other thing is, I think, when I need, when this project is approved, then we go in there and, you know, do some selective demo where we can see the structure. It's, you can see, I'm showing a a line of columns there, and those are also going to affect how these rooms get configured. So when you see this, you know, the 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 floor plan sort of looks like each unit is, you know, very unique. It's almost um I don't know what style of architecture you would call it, like a Francarry. That's, that's the main reason.
That's a question I just, I just noticed that, too. So I'm looking at that thing with the columns. So the columns are the, I guess, the little
Eyes.
Almost like uh, I don't know, double Ts, whatever, in the middle of the, in the middle of it? It looks like one of them is sitting like right directly outside the door of the unit.
Absolutely. So, so what we do is
How is that possible? I mean, I guess if this, I mean, you're walking right into a, a column?
Yeah, this, so this is schematic, you know, maybe I shouldn't, I I I should feel bad presenting to another architect a plan like this one. But what we did is, you, this, we've gone through a few iterations of this uh plan, and the first time we went into the building, uh, there was still a lot of stuff stored on the upper floors. And so the going in to do the, the find the columns was uh an exercise that we did not too long ago. And again, because we can't quite, I can't quite um locate them accurately, just because, again, I don't have all the sightlines established. In fact, the other thing that we have, too, is that there's different floor levels that we're going to have to deal with. So, I mean, I haven't spent a lot of time refining that, but definitely, you know, once the project starts to go ahead, we'll develop the plan and make sure that it works, it works the best way we can get it.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, but I think it's going to be, I I I ultimately think it's going to be, you know, a good project. Uh, I just think that might be a little bit more work, might want to look into, maybe even reduce, trying, thinking about reducing the units. I don't know, it's just, if it can't be worked, if it can't be done, it can't be done. I mean, I, I think, I would like to see at least try. It's just I see the, the three units of each, you know, less than six hundred square feet. And again, I'm, I'm a little concerned. I, I guess the question then be, what, what about laundry unit, laundry for these people, for people, for the tenants? I mean, there's, there's no laundry units, there's nothing inside the units themselves, there's no laundry room. Uh, I mean, I, I, if that's your client, if the people you're going to rent, like, I, I understand that, but I just
No, but as
It'd be a little bit more common.
Yeah, as per code, uh mass plumbing code, we have supply laundry facilities to the unit. Um, and um, that, that will be addressed. But again, this was a basic schematic to give you an idea of what we're trying to achieve. But once we start getting in there with the structural, um, things are going to move around a little bit.
Okay. Um, well, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of with Dennis on this. Maybe we've got to do a little bit more more work on that, answering some of the, some of the comments from the city. There were a lot of them.
Yep.
Uh, and uh, I, I would like to just see if they can get, get back to try to see if they can, if it's possible to reduce the unit, to reduce the units or, or at least restructure them so there is a little bit more space. Uh, especially on the smaller units. If you can't, you can't. I get it. I understand. It's just, I want to, I, I'd at least I like to see the effort being made to try to restructure, see if we can restructure it to uh get a little bit more palatable. Uh, and uh, go from there. But I, I mean, ultimately, I think this is probably a project that will, will uh be probably go forward, but I think we need a little bit more work to consider granting some relief. So, all right, wish you the best of luck. Thanks.
Thank you.
Uh, thanks. Thank you, Mr. Callahan. Um, again, this is number Peck. Um, uh, first of all, um, Mr. Marlowe, um, I, I do want to say thank you for the, for the narrative and, and the history of this site. Um, you know, this, this small business who's been um a really pit pivotal and vital um kind of stakeholder in the community for, for decades. Um, and, you know, right, right now, they're trying to kind of um, you know, stay afloat and, and kind of repurpose their site and, and, you know, um, it's a great kind of hybrid residence, you know, business model, like you're trying to, to do with these, with these residents and, and units. Um, I, and, 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 you know, I'm speaking for myself, but, you know, I, I do feel that any, every project that, that you do, Mr. Marlowe, um, you know, comes up amazingly, amazingly, and is done well, and done with the best intent and well thought out process for the, for the neighbors and the, the neighborhood and the community and, and the city as a whole. Um, with, with that being said, Mr. Marlowe, I, I, I think um, uh, we, we are putting the cart before the horse. Um, there, there are some, there are some, some major concerns and kind of conditions and comments from the city that that aren't addressed with all the information we have. Um, I, I do like the, the, the idea um of continuing this, just to make sure we get all the information. You know, I, I don't know what your thoughts are on that, or Mr. Marlowe, or Mr. Gagnon, um, but, you know, we'll, we'll leave it up to you if, if, if you wish to go forward with, with a vote. Um, just a reminder, there's, there's four members on tonight, and, um, you know, to, to be in favor, all four have to go in favor for this project to move forward.
We'll continue, and I'll work with the city engineer and Pat Flaherty uh to make the changes that they're looking for.
Per- perfect. I, I, I think that's in the best interest of, of everyone, um, you know, your, your project, uh, that benefits the city and uh and uh make sure we get all the information and cross all Ts and dot Is and all that. Um, how, how far off do you want to go, Mr. Marlowe, with this continuance?
Uh, let's see.
You have to go to the planning board, too, correct, Mr. Marlowe?
Yes.
Fran, any input on that as far as, you know, whether planning board should be reviewing this uh?
Probably going to continue the planning board, too.
Uh, Yeah, so you're going to the planning board on the June first, incorrect?
Yes.
Yep. So it's up to you, uh, if we'll feel ready in two weeks that um to provide additional information that the board is looking for, or we can also do a month.
Let's, let's continue this uh zoning board for two weeks. And Fran, can I, uh, can I contact you tomorrow to talk about the planning board?
Yes, you may.
All right. Let's do it that way.
Okay, so, so, Mr. Marlowe, I just want to make sure we're, we're on the same page here. So you're saying not the June eighth meeting, but behalf of the June twenty-second meeting will continue?
No, you, what's the next one after tonight?
June eighth.
June eighth, you said?
Yes.
Yes, continue us to June eighth.
Okay, uh, perfect. Is there any, any objections, any comments from, from the board members to continue this matter, uh, the June eighth meeting?
Uh, through Mr. Chairman, I would just like to have a comment. Um, noticing all of the flat roof areas that this building has to offer, is it possible that we could see something that would showcase some sustainability elements, i.e. a solar array or water conservation measures or something to that nature?
Can you repeat that, please?
Uh, knowing how much flat roof this project has to offer, I was wondering if we could see something in the next iteration that showcases some sustainability elements. For example, uh, a photovoltaic array on the roof or some water conservation measures, maybe a green roof or something to that nature.
Okay, okay. Let me uh, let me address that with Anthony, uh, and we'll, uh, we'll see what we can do.
Wonderful.
Good. Uh, thanks, thank you. So, uh, with that being said, let's continue this petition until our next meeting on June eighth. Um, so with that being said, can, can we, can I have a motion to continue this matter to our next meeting on June eighth?
This is Sean Callahan, the clerk. Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB twenty twenty dash twenty-six for seven seventy-six Lakeview Avenue to continue the public hearing to June eighth, twenty twenty.
I'll, I'll second the motion.
All right, motion by Mr. Callahan, seconded by Mr. McCarthy to continue the matter to June eighth. Um, can we have a roll call, please?
Uh, Vice Chairman Peck?
Uh, approve, continue us to June eighth.
Member Callahan?
Approve, continue us to June eighth, twenty twenty.
Member Briere?
Approve continuance.
Member McCarthy?
Approve continuance to June eighth.
All right, Mr. Marlowe, you've been continued to the June eighth. Um, we'll see you in a few weeks. Um, have a good evening.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. And thank you, sir. Moving on to our, uh, next business and, and other business. Um, in other business, we have a minor modification request for nine to fifteen Pearl Street. Um, in two thousand and fifteen, Julio Rodriguez received special permit approval to convert an existing auto repair establishment into six-unit residential structure at nine to fifteen Pearl Street, located in the downtown Missus D and U zoning district. The applicant is now seeking to modify conditions of approval number seven. Parking shall be allowed on site by including a fifteen-minute parking space next to the building for the residents. Um, is, is the applicant here this evening?
Uh, yes, yes, I am.
Uh, go, go ahead, sir. Do you want to share updated about your modification to your plan?
Uh, yes, sir. I have submitted a um updated site plan. Um, so in two thousand and fifteen, it was my intention to use uh this existing driveway, which has been used as, as a driveway before by the uh, by the previous auto repair shop. Uh, but in two thousand and fifteen, when I applied for the special permit, I had um that I wanted to use this space instead of a driveway um as green space uh for the tenants to, to enjoy. Um, however, after going through the um construction sites, there's been um a few incidents where uh, this is a very nar- narrow street and very busy street, and some of the um construction workers, uh, you know, been close to having um accidents in the, in that area. Um, as part of what I do as a landlord, I have already rented out uh two of these units to uh independent couple of elderly ladies. And I want to make sure that they'll have a safe space where they can um unload and load uh groceries or uh space where they can be safely picked up without being risked uh getting hit by a car uh or anything of that nature. This, this driveway has been previously used as a uh parking lot um before, and I will still uh uh include a green space area in the back instead of using the whole um existing area. We are, uh, we are still including about a hundred and twenty square feet of uh green space. And we're also including a privacy hedge uh on the back to add to the landscaping.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. Rodriguez, um, for your update to your modification request.
Thank you.
But a- as of right now, we're, we're going to open this up, just a question to the public, just specifically to this, this modification of a of, of the condition of, of approval number seven with the no parking on site and, and the conversion to change um for a fifteen-minute parking spot. So we're opening to the public, but we're just going to open it specifically to the specific condition of number seven, and we're not going to address any other if people have any other questions um to this modification. Uh, all right. Um, anyone wishing to speak on, on behalf of this modification? Open to the public, anyone wishing to speak on this minor modification request? Any members of the public wishing to speak on this minor modification request? All right, hearing none. Um, I'm just going to open up to, to the board um for any questions or comments they have. Um, I won't go down the line, but if anybody want, wants to chime in or ask any question uh specifically to this minor modification request, um, please just say your name and, and, and your comments and questions. So I'll open the floor to, to the rest of my colleagues.
Thank you.
This is Sean Callahan. Uh, I'm looking at the site plan. I think specifically the comments, uh, and maybe Fran, maybe I'm missing this, because your comments were issued on May twenty-first. I see the site plan, revised site plan that was posted uh on May nineteenth, if I'm not mistaken. But you were looking for an updated site plan of the property to show the proposed changes in the area that will house the proposed parking space and modify landscape outdoor space, and it looks like the building department is asking for the same thing, and I don't see that on the, at least what's been submitted as proposed as the updated site plan. Um, am I missing something?
This was sent out to Francesca. I believe it was sent out last Friday, I believe.
Um, so is that, Sean, is that what your look, did you print that from the website or from email?
From the website.
Okay, I'll just double check that I, the updated site plan is uploaded to the website. Hold on one minute.
Yeah, I mean, because that seems like be what the big thing that we need for this modification. So, I mean, if you have it, I mean,
Right now.
If you haven't, I mean, I'll take a look at it. It might be okay, but, I mean, I don't see how we can do a modification on something that we don't even have a modified site plan on. So, uh, and that's exactly what was pointed out in the comments. I mean, Fran, if you have it, if you could share it, can you share it on the board? Yeah, that'd be great.
I'm looking now, and the plan that was submitted that I uploaded, uh, it does say that the most recent revision date is five nineteen twenty-two. So the site plan that you're looking at is the same one that I'm looking at, and that's the latest uh, the most updated material that I received
Okay.
for this petition.
Now, did you look at the, you made your, you made your comments on May twenty-first, and it specifically states on five, six A, it's underlined, staff request the applicant submit an updated site plan of the property that shows the proposed changes to be to the area that will house the proposed parking space and modify the landscape outdoors.
Right, I'm, sometimes the dates on, on the plans uh are not always correct. So sometimes I'll request an updated site plan, and I, we do get us an updated site plan. And I know that the date is off because it just doesn't align with when they sent it to me, but that doesn't necessarily mean that it hasn't. I would just look at the, the site plan, but I can always request that they update the date at the bottom, but I would just look at the content of the site.
Okay, I, I just want to make sure that, so this is, the site plan that, that is on the website is what you you received it in your comment. Your comments were probably already there before you looked at it, right? Maybe?
Uh, yep, so I wrote my comments, and then I received this after, I received the comment.
That's fine. No, no problems. Nothing, nothing wrong with that. I mean, I'm just kind of, I'm just trying to clarify, because we just want to make sure that we're dealing with the correct uh the correct uh That being said, I mean, it's going to, if it's only, it's only, it's only a fifteen-minute parking space, correct?
I want to call it, yes, unloading and loading parking. Um, just, you know, this is not going to be a permanent parking. We, we have worked that situation out. Uh, this is going to be temporary parking so that we can unload safely and load in, in the other way.
All right. Uh, well, there'll, there'll be signage, I presume. You're going to be putting up signage saying it's only fifteen minutes. Unloading, loading and unloading only fifteen minutes, okay. All right, all right, with that, now that we got that cleared up, uh, I, I probably would have no issues, um, with this. Uh, I think this seems to be a minor modification, and I would probably support it, so, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Callahan. Uh, Mr. McCarthy or Mr. Briere, do you have any comments, um, pertaining to this, to this modification?
Um, this is Mr. McCarthy, I, I do have several comments if I could. Um, sure, Mr. Chairman, um, there are no dimensions, I, first of all, I think, um, I, um, saw this as a aggregation to the original plan where we are not gaining, um, again, um, previous area in this very dense paved zone of the city for water infiltration, and, um, we're, we're looking at a, a site plan that you submitted that is saying that it's a one space that you're, you're, um, requesting, but there's a dimension on this site plan indicating the whole side yard is forty-five feet. There's a lawn area that is not dimensioned, maybe it's ten feet, leaving roughly thirty-five feet, which could be for two cars. And we're not gaining the green space or the water infiltration space that I was hoping we were gonna be getting in the original approval. Um, if you're only asking for a parking space, that sounds like a dimension of nine by eighteen, not, um, you know, thirty-five feet by twelve, or whatever the site plan is indicating for that area to remain. Um, and then the next thought that I would have is it possible that the pavement could be made of, of pervious material, such as pervious pavers, or pervious asphalt, or pervious concrete, or something that would be still in tune with the original approval, which was gonna be a landscape or green space or otherwise a pervious space?
We have a draining system, um, underneath, um, in that area, uh, to take care of, um, uh, water coming from the roof. So we have, is, uh, we have a drain system in place.
I understand that, and that takes care of the roof, that's correct, but a- as we know, in that area, we're surrounded by very little green space and mostly sidewalks, roadways, buildings, parking areas that are paved. And, um, we're really relying on the, uh, current systems for mitigating the, the surface water, which are probably overextended or inadequate maybe on some storm event. And so by introducing green space, we're only helping that situation get better. And that's what I think we were looking at, at least how I was looking at that landscape area that we previously approved. That's why I'm asking for the paved surface, if it is to be paved, to be limited to strictly what you're asking for, which is a parking space, something to the nature of nine feet by eighteen. And if it's gonna be paved, is it possible that that paving material could be pervious, such as using pervious pavers or pervious asphalt? Does that make sense?
Uh, yes, it does, and I believe one of the reasons why we wanted to extend the parking, it's, we, we want to be able, even if, in, even though it's a temporary parking, our trashcans are underneath, uh, the stairs. So we wanna be able to have, for people to be able to access this area. So whatever car it is, even though it's temporary, they can go as, uh, upfront as much as they can, so that there's room behind it. Um, our sprinkler system is also, um, in that area, uh, we wanna make sure that, you know, that's accessible at all times, so there's access through that, through that, uh, front area if the car is parked all the way in the front.
But, um, but the site plan that you presented doesn't have dimensions for the lawn area, doesn't have dimensions for the parking area. It does call out a paved under second floor entry. It doesn't call out a paved, uh, walkway that goes to the street from the stairway, but I'm assuming that's part of this paved parking and loading and unloading zone.
Correct.
But I'm asking, is it possible to do something closer to what was approved, which is to expand the, um, uh, pervious space?
Yes, we can, we can think into that, we, I know we have, I believe we have, um, ten feet, ten or twelve feet right now of green space.
It's not, it's not indicated on the plan.
Right, it's, yeah, I'm looking at it. Um, he, he should have added in, uh, so you're looking, you wanna do a nine by nineteen, you believe it's?
Nine by eighteen is a parking space, you know, if you wanna make that parking space nine by eighteen, that's fine. And if you wanna indicate a walkway beside the stair that's four feet wide, that's fine to have access to that area where they have the trash receptacles and the sprinkler system, that's fine. But we wanna, I think, see the space that is allowing for water infiltration in this already heavily packed zone be indicated as the maximum allowable and still provide you with a parking area.
Okay.
Does that make?
Yes, it does.
So I would condition it that we work with EPP to identify the maximum area available with an off-beat parking space for the site plan to indicate, um, uh, a, uh, landscape, uh, pervious area.
Okay.
Thank, thank you, Mr. McCarthy, um, for your comments. Um, Mr. Briere, um, do you have any comments or questions, sir, for this modification?
No, other than to say that I agree with the, uh, conditions set forth by, or proposed by, um, Commissioner McNamara, and if they are met, I would support this petition.
Thank you.
All right, um, thank, thank you, Mr. Briere. Um, so, so Mr. Rodriguez, um, you, you heard the, the wish of, of the board, um, you know, I, I also share in, in the same concerns of, of Mr. McCarthy, um, just, uh, you know, indicating, uh, a nine by eighteen parking spot on the plan, and also identifying the, the, the site plan, like, landscape and pervious, um, area facing, um, are you okay with those, um, conditions, um, that, that the board talked about tonight?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, Mr. Sean Callahan, can I, if I could just chime in real quick on this, I'm, I'm kinda wondering, and maybe Fran might have to, maybe Fran might have to give some guidance on this. Uh, can we make a minor modification on something that's conditional? Because the whole thing is, we have to make a determination that there's a minor modification, but if we don't have the information in front of us, how can we make that determination? I mean, that's, uh, it's, it's kind of, kind of like, again, putting the cart before the horse type thing, I guess, if you wanna, wanna put it, put it that way, because we can't, we can't, we can't reach the threshold of making, finding if there's a minor modification, and then we don't even have the information that Dennis is looking for, which is, which Dennis, which I agree with, probably we need, which is the, um, new site plan identifying the dimensions of the parking space and the landscape pervious area, so I don't think we can meet that threshold, so, I don't know, Fran, any comment on that?
Um, I am actually not a hundred percent sure, I've never, uh, I have never managed a project that's gone that direction, so I would have to talk with Jared.
I don't know, anybody else have any thoughts on that? That's just my, those are my thoughts, I mean, I, 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 I generally don't have a problem with, problem with the conditions, it's just more of the trying to meet the threshold and make the vote, that's.
I think technically you're right on, that, that, that is, that is what we would need to have, and application doesn't correctly identify what the modification is, so I think you're technically right what you're suggesting, so maybe we should continue with.
Yeah.
Um, I, that, that makes, that makes sense to me, Mr. McCarthy and, and Mr. Callahan, um, if, if you want to continue this matter, um, only because, um, we don't have the concrete plans in front of us for the updated landscape and, and pervious space and the, and the actual, actual parking space dimension, um, on site. Um, Mr. Rodriguez, so you heard the comments of the board?
I have, yes.
You can go forward with the vote tonight, um, you'll need a poll to, to approve this modification, or, um, you can continue this, uh, matter to our next meeting to get the updated site plan with all the comments that, um, the board, um, requested for. What, what is your wish, Mr. Rodriguez?
We can continue it once I have the, um, updated site plans.
Okay, um, thank, thank you, I think that's in the best interest, uh, for everybody. Um, any, any other comments or questions before we, uh, we motion this matter, uh, to be continued?
Yes, I have one comment, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, go ahead, Mr. Briere.
Mark, Mark Briere speaking, I'd like to, uh, beg the forgiveness of, of Member McCarthy for referring to him as Commissioner McNamara. I know those Irish guys are very touchy, you gotta, you gotta get the right clan or they get very upset, so my apologies.
You gave my promotion, Mark.
See that, here's Callahan ju- jumping in there, okay.
All right, thanks, thanks, thank you, thank you, folks, thank you, all right. All right, um, with that being said, um, our next meeting is June eighth. Are you, are you okay with that next meeting date, Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes, I am.
All right, um, so there's no more comments or questions, um, can we have a motion to continue this matter, um, to our June eighth meeting?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I don't have a ZB number on this, but, uh, I'd like to make a motion for, uh, the, uh, to continue the minor modification request for nine dash fifteen Pearl Street to June eighth, twenty twenty.
Thank you very much, thank you for your time.
Is there a second to, to this, um, motion?
Mark Briere, seconds of motion.
All right, motion by Mr. Callahan, seconded by Mr. Briere to continue the matter, um, to our next meeting on June eighth. Um, can we have a roll call, please?
Vice Chairman Peck.
Um, approve continuance to June eighth.
Member Callahan.
Approve continuance to June eighth, twenty twenty.
Member Briere.
Approve continuance.
Member McCarthy.
Approve continuance to June eighth.
All right, the matter has been continued to June eighth, um, have a good, good evening, Mr. Rodriguez. Moving on, thank, thank you, sir, have a good night.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the next item on our agenda, um, also on the other business is, uh, a variance extension request at two fifty-six Trotting Park Raw, Road. The applicant received variance approval on seven nine thousand and eighteen to construct a new single-family home at two fifty-six Trotting Park Road. The parcel is located in the suburban neighborhood, single-family SSF zoning district, and requires a variance for minimum furniture and for any other relief required. The applicant received an extension on July twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen, and is now seeking another extension. Um, is the applicant here this evening?
Yes, good evening, this is, uh, Lenny De Souza, I'm the, uh, owner of two sixty, two six, Trotting Park Road.
Good evening, sir, um, tell us about, um, your extension request for the variance.
Um, let's see, uh, so I, recently I was, I went through a divorce, um, uh, in, um, the divorce agreement, the transfer of the household, as part of the divorce was a mistake, um, we, uh, my lawyer, myself, uh, we, we have another court date to try to resolve the issue. So I, that's why I need a little bit more time.
Is, is that all the, uh, all the things you want to share with the board, sir?
Uh, yes.
Okay, um, thank, thank you, sir. Um, so I, I, I'll open up quickly to the, uh, to the public, if anyone wants to speak, uh, on, on behalf of this extension. Um, so open up the public, um, meeting, if anyone wants to speak, um, on this variance extension request. Um, anyone wishing to speak on behalf of this extension request? Again, anyone wishing to speak on behalf of this extension request? All right, seeing none, um, the public hearing is closed, um, I'm just gonna open up to, to the members, um, um, Mr. Um, the chair recognizes Mr. Uh, Mr. Briere, Mr. Briere, do, do you wanna make any comments or have any questions regarding this extension request, sir? Mr. Briere, do you have any comments regarding this extension request, sir? All right, hearing none, um, Mr. McCarthy, um, the chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy, Mr. McCarthy, do you have any questions or comments for this extension request, sir?
Uh, yes, I do, through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, um, just, um, extend, um, my condolences for your hardship, um, on this matter, and I think that a, an additional, um, extension should be granted with the caveat that this should be the last extension granted since we've already granted one previously. So, we're not in the habit, I think, of extending, uh, variances, uh, as reported, it's my knowledge, and I think that we have made exceptions, um, in the past, and where we do have a hardship, I believe this should go forward.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. McCarthy, um, for your comments, sir. Um, the chair recognizes Mr. Callahan, Mr. Callahan, you have any questions or comments regarding this extension request, sir?
Um, I do, um, I, I, I believe, I sympathize with you, Mr. De Souza, but, um, unfortunately, I, I kinda have to disagree with, uh, my fellow board member, Mr. McCarthy. And it's not, um, not that I don't want to grant you the extension, but I quite frankly don't think we can. You got the extension, you got the, uh, variance in two thousand and eighteen based upon, uh, it was all based upon, um, not only two fifty-six Trotting Park, but two sixty Trotting Park as well. And since then, you've, you've transferred the property. I understand it's through three divorce, and I understand you've got some legal problem, things going on with your divorce, probably with regards to that property, but in my, my opinion, uh, I think that changes the ballgame with regards to this variance and this extension to the point where I think you now have to start, you now have to, uh, you might have to reapply. Uh, unless Fran can, I don't know, Fran, is, do you, you know anything about, with regards to this, because I don't think we, I, I think the variance is la- the variance, well, I'm not gonna say it has, we did grant an extension last time, but, um, I just don't think we can grant any further extensions on this now that the, the, so that the land, that the property has changed since, since we've granted that variance. I don't know, Fran, do you have any input?
Um, I hesitate to give any definite answer.
Okay.
I, I'm not sure what the, the status of the land, I wasn't there when this was originally passed on, or what the, what the relationship between two sixty and two fifty-six Trotting Park are, but, um, if the access to the two fifty-six Trotting Park, uh, road depended on the property in front, then that would, I guess, change.
Well, it was certainly, yeah, I mean, it was certainly, it was certainly taken to, it was certainly taken to, it was certainly taken to effect back in two thousand and, uh, two thousand and eighteen, when the, when the variance was previously granted, because it's clearly listed as a specific finding, um, I don't know, I mean, it's, because I, I don't know, because the property, uh, property was transferred, two sixty seemed, was transferred after we, this variance was granted. And again, I don't know if that's gonna put us in a situation, a different situation now, because- a different situation now, because the situation has changed. Um.
May I inter- in- interrupt?
Sure, go ahead, yeah, sure, Mr. De Souza, if you have any, if you have any input, that'd be great.
Yeah, so, um, yep, 'cause of the coronavirus, you know, the court date to resolve the land issue has been pushed out. It's just, it's just causing more headaches, uh, for myself here, um, you know, you know, had Matt Hammer from Land Plux do all the engineering, it was quite a bit of work put into this, and, and I was hoping to build a house there just for the logistics of being closer to my kids. Um, and, you know, it's just falling apart here.
I, I, I understand, I sympathize, and believe me, I'm, I'm a lawyer, so I know about the, though the courts are closed, and for the time being, they're all closing until at least July first, and probably gonna be even past that. When are, um, when are the, when are these, these variants close to lapse? Fran, do you have a?
Right.
You have that information in front of you?
I don't have it in front of me, but I can look, uh. Okay, so the applicant received an extension on July twenty-second, uh, for one year, so it would expire on July twenty-second, twenty twenty.
Okay. Uh, um, I guess my, my suggestion, I really don't think we were able to do this. I think, I think that we can't, I think the, uh, variance is probably null now because of when it was previously granted. But for the purposes of the fact that the situation we're in, the courts are presently closed, and at least until July first, they're closed, and I don't know how quickly you're gonna get your, you're gonna get in front of the court after that. I maybe, I, I'll think about it, I may be willing to consider a very small, small continuance, a small extension, very small. Because, uh, and then with the caveat, you can probably try to come in front of us again, but I don't think that's gonna be. I, I think in the end, ultimately, it's gonna come down to, you might have to start all over again. Because the, the, because it's a different, the land is different now from when it was previously granted. I don't know, that's what I'm, that's what I'm leaning at right now, but I'll listen to my fellow board members. I don't know, Mr. B- Mr. Brier dropped off, I don't know if he's back now, but, um, I'll, uh, I'll listen to my fellow board members on that and do what I think, so, thank you.
Uh, thank, thank you, Mr. Callahan. Um, I, I just, so, Mr. Mr. Brier, um, do you have any comments or questions regarding this, um, extension request, sir?
No.
Okay, uh, thank, thank you.
I'm not, I'm, I, I, I've been to say, I'm not opposed to granting the extension. If, if it's legal for us to do so, I'd be in favor of granting the extension.
Okay, thanks, thank you, Mr. Uh.
I mean, that's my, that's where my, that's where my question lies, sorry, Mr. Chairman, that's where my question lies, whether legally we were able to do it. But under the circumstances with, uh, the present COVID pandemic and the, uh, restriction of, uh, availability to the courts, I would be okay, I'd be comfortable with a small extension, uh, to, but we're gonna have to readdress this, and, uh, we may have to readdress this at the small, at the next extension, uh, time. Because I don't think that we're able to grant any more after that. I think he's probably gonna have to start over. But just for those purposes alone, I would, uh, I, I would be comfortable doing a small extension maybe to September. Extending, extending the variance to September. Uh, I don't know if I can go any, any further, further out than that. So, that's, that's my, those are my thoughts, so.
Okay, uh, thanks, thank you, Mr. Callahan, for your time. Um, I, I, I think for me, I, I, I completely understand the concerns of, of, of Mr. De Souza and, and your, you know, the legal issue and on the hardship you're suffering right now, and, and ob- obviously with, with this, um, pandemic, um, you know, it makes things even more difficult. Um, you know, I, I just wanna, um, circle back or just relate to my, my concern with the legality of, of this, uh, in terms of, you know, are, are we okay to even legally, you know, approve the extension request? Um, I did hear my, my fellow colleague, Mr. Mr. Callahan, who is, who is a, an attorney, um, by background and, uh, profession, so he, he would definitely know more about, um, the landscape and this kind of area. Um, you know, but speaking from just my experience with the board and reviewing extension requests and, uh, and, and all that, um, you know, I, I, I would be open to, 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 you know, um, voting in favor of this extension request. Um, you know, how, how a form that looks appropriate or, you know, or legal. Uh, maybe it's not one year out, maybe it's six months out, maybe it's, you know, two months out. Um, so I, I don't know if this is something perhaps we can just continue this request. Um, um, to, to after, you know, the, all the legal and court issues have, have opened and been resolved. Uh, 'cause, you know, it's, it's not a fair situation to Mr. De Souza, anybody I know with everything, how it is, everything being closed and delayed and backlog. Um, so I'm, I'm in favor of, of continuing this until, um, you know, we get more information, uh, regarding like the, the legal status of, of the property and, and the legal issue, uh, when the courts and everything can open up back up for the public. Um, so tho- those are my, those are my thoughts and, and input. Um, what, what's the wish of the board?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Sean Callahan, uh, I, I would agree with you about continuing it, but my only concern is, and my understanding, you know, knowing that the courts are closed until July first at the earliest. Um, they're gonna have a backlog, once they get back in, they're gonna have a backlog. Um, so I don't know what the status of Mr. De Souza's particular case is gonna be, and how long it's gonna, how long it's gonna be. Um, I guess if we continue the hearing on this into July, maybe we'll have a better understanding, but we're, we're kinda, I think we're, we're kinda cutting up on the fact that, that the, the variance itself is gonna lapse, and I don't want, I mean, if my, if we are able to act and grant a further continuance of this, then I don't wanna, I don't want to lose that, lose that right. Um, and I want, I, I wanna give them the flexibility, I wanna give the flexibility, understanding that the courts are, when, there's, there's still, there's still gonna be questions even in July first, whether the courts are gonna be reopening. I presume that they will. But, um, even if they are, again, there's gonna be backlogs, and I don't, I just wanna, and I, I, a six-month continuance, a six-month, uh, granting of this extension, I just, I, 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 I'd hate to just do that in order to then, then come to find out that we really shouldn't have, we should have, have noticed, we should have noticed this out further. I think at least with the, with the prospect, with the understanding, uh, with the hardship that we have of the courts being closed, and Mr. De Souza having a pending hearing with the courts, trying to settle this land dispute. I, I would feel comfortable granting an extent, granting the extension of this right now, but only very short to possibly to, like I said, September, maybe. And I really wouldn't, I really wouldn't go farther in September, but if people wanna go a little bit farther, I probably could go to October. But that's my, that's my thoughts on this, uh, just right now, um, but, and, I'll, again, I'll listen to, and, and whatever, anybody else, thanks, well, thanks.
Three, Mr. Callahan. A three, Mr. Chairman, I was just wondering, would it make sense to get, uh, the, uh, legal counsel from the city to weigh in on this extension? Whether the board has the ability to grant an extension or not. Uh, Sean, I, I, I understand what you're saying, but, um, I, I don't know if, you know, if it's presented to us as a board to grant, whether it's legal or not, I'm not sure. Should the city's legal department be weighing in on this also, is my question, I guess?
Wouldn't hurt. I mean, I, I can ask the, ask the, ask the, we could ask the, the legal department, um, their thoughts on this, I mean, that, they are the, they are the city's attorney, and, and again, getting back to this, the situation we're in, I don't know how back up they are and what their present, you know, staff is. I know the city's, you know, they're, they're limited on staff at this point right now. Um, the, the prob- I mean, I, I, I think we keep coming back to the, to the, to the, uh, the clock is running on Mr. De Souza as far as the, the lapsing of the, of the variance at the end of July and this current situation that we're in. Uh, Fran, yeah, Fran, what, what are your, uh?
So, I think, I mean, as, from an administrative standpoint, it's, I'm unclear about, like, let, like, Mr. McCarthy said, you know, we have in front of us here, and as an administrative figure, I, I feel like I only, as the city, we only see, um, the certain application materials, but the legal status of the land, I'm not sure if it's, if the city has all of the resources to really dig into that, um, and weigh in on, I, I'm not sure. I've, I've never been in this position before, but I'm just not really sure if the city has all the information that it needs to weigh in on that, and I, I think it just needs to be demonstrated that whoever the applicant is owns what the land, owns the land that they were given the variance for in the first place, because that's what they applied for initially. If that makes sense.
I agree with you.
Uh, thank, thank you. Okay, thank, thank, so thank you, um.
Mr. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, yes, go ahead, Mr. Brier.
Mr. Chairman, Mark Brier has a question of his colleague, uh, Mr. Callahan. Uh, Mr. Callahan, is your question whether, does your, is your question the legality of us granting the extension? Or legal question of title to the property?
My question is to the.
What's your apprehension?
My apprehension is, the initial variance was granted when the land was merged with two sixty Trotting Park Road. And it, and the findings clearly specify that, that two sixty Trotting Park Road was involved when this was initially granted. Now that, now we're, we're extending this, but the initial, we're extending the initial variance, but that was done with the understanding of that particular piece of land was included in the variance, whether or not that, that was affected or not, that's not, that, I don't think that that's, that matters. My hesitancy is now, and again, and again, the other thing that comes back to me now is how is this affecting two sixty Trotting Park Road? Don't they have a right to now come in, don't the owners there now have a right to come in and to tell us how it affects them? Uh, and again, I understand it's Mr. De Souza's ex-wife. Um, and I, I will note for the record, um, that we did get, and I don't know if Mrs. De Souza got this too, we did get a correspondence from an attorney, uh, Lily, uh, Lynn Gissimem, who, uh, states that she represents Mrs. De Souza. Um, and did kind of set forth some sort of, uh, just basically say what the situation is with regards to two sixty Trotting Park Road. Um. Again, my, my hesitancy is, how, how is the situ- is the situation changed now? When it was granted previously with the, with two sixty party, Trotting Park Road involved, part of the land? Now it's been, now it's, has, it's, it's been separated. The variance was granted, the variance was extended, we weren't aware the last time the variance were extended that the properties were separated. Now we're looking to it extended again, has the situation changed, and does that affect your initial variance? And does that re- that, that now requires that Mr. De Souza would have to now file a new application, have it posted, uh, uh, provide all the other, uh, all the other butters with notice? Because this grant, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, Fran, maybe you can correct me, this extension, we don't have, they, he's not required to provide any other notice to any other butters at this point right now, correct?
Correct.
I mean, that's my, that's my legal apprehen- that's my apprehension on this, whether we legally now, now the situation has changed, whether we legally now can, can grant this extension, based on the fact that the land is now, not, not, not the title, but the land is now, the situation of the land has now changed. That's my apprehension. I may be wrong, I don't know, I'm not this, I'm not a land, land, I'm not a, no, land, uh, use is not technically my spec- expertise as a lawyer. I mean, I get a lot of it from doing this, I like it, I enjoy it, but, um, I, that's my, that's my apprehension, so.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. Callahan, um.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, Mark, Mark Brier speaking.
Yes, go ahead.
This may sound, this may sound like a simple question, but what's the problem with us granting the extension? And if our legal department tells us that we've done something inappropriate or illegal, they simply strike down our decision. Let's just grant the extension. All the butters are aware of this project and what, what, what he proposes to do anyway. Now, I agree with you, if there's, if there's some question with title, or he, he, he doesn't have the legal right to make this petition, fine, it's gonna be struck down anyway, will be overruled. But just for the purposes of the extension, what he proposes to do, what, what would be the harm in us granting the extension?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Brier. Um, and any, any other comments or, or questions or concerns regarding this, um, extension? I, I do just wanna just add, I know we're kinda going, um, back and forth with a few different ideas and, and options with this particular extension. Um, I, I completely understand the, the apprehension or the concern of Mr. Callahan from, from a legal standpoint. Um, you know, but I, as, as I stated before, and I'm sorry, I'm speaking for myself, um, I'm, I'm not opposed to extending this um, personally, and, and if there is some legal issue or legal, you know, like, uh, uh, concern, um, you know, we, we can address it when we get there, but, you know, I, I think for, for, for me at least, I'm speaking for myself, um, if we were to extend this, this would definitely be the last extension, um, given, you know, not just hardship with the legal, pending legal issues with Mr. De Souza, but even with the pandemic, um, it'd be hard to do anything the last three, four months, the rest of the summer of the year. So I, 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 I would be in favor also of extending this, um, like a year out, but that, I'm speaking for myself. So, kind of, th- those are my comments, um.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, look, I did the math when I previously was mentioning September. That's four months. I'll go six. That's, that's, I, I don't think I can go any further than that. And that's, that's great, that's just giving the benefit of the doubt to Mr. De Souza and taking into account the current situation with the COVID, with COVID pandemic, and that the courts are closed. Um, I'm sorry, Mr. De Souza, that's as far as I, that's as far as I'll go. You're just gonna have to ramp it up once the courts get back. I would say get on your lawyer to try to get this ramped, whatever legal issues are, are, uh, are, you have pending, tell your lawyer, and it's just gonna have to try to get ramped up and try to figure out what it's done. But I, I don't think I can go any further than the six months. That would be November, so, uh, that, I, 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 I'm, I'm hesitant to think that we even have the legal right to do this anyways, based on the situation, but I will be willing to do an extension for six months. That's, that's as far as I can go.
All right, thank you.
Um, a- any more comments or questions or concerns to the board member, uh, in, in regard to a vote of extending this variance extension request for six months out, so it, it'll be till November twenty-sixth, if I'm correct, uh, twenty-second, twenty twenty, correct?
Sorry, I was doing the ma- I was doing the math by, by today's standards, you know, it, it lapsed in July. Five months, okay, December. Well, yeah, six months will be December. July, right? Fran? Sorry, I'm not, math, I'm a lawyer, math's not. Fran, sorry, I'm not, math, I'm a lawyer, math's not my forte.
Yeah, I think you're right, it would be December 22nd, I believe, Mr. Callahan, I think you, you are correct there.
All right, so December.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I would just like to ask, in the meantime, that we have the legal department review the letter from the attorney to advise us, um, just to get a, a sanity check as to whether or not, you know, this was the decision that we made correctly or not. But it does seem, does seem like we are on, you know, have a new territory here and it's, it's an odd place to be, so I, I would support the six-month extension there.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Um, and I do like, I like that, um, comment you made with the regards to getting, um, just a, an update from the, uh, law department in regards to this extension approval request. Fran, Mr. Brier, if you don't mind, just, we sent the law, the legal department in regards to this vote afterwards, just let us know what, what their findings are. Um, and then, Mr. Brier, are you, um, are you comfortable to go forward with a vote tonight in regards to a six-month extension?
Yes.
Okay, all right, um, Mr. D'Souza, you, you heard the comments and the, uh, and everything from the board, do you wish to go forward with, with a vote tonight, sir, in regards to your extension request?
Y- yes, please.
Okay.
All right, I did, I did the math wrong again, so it's six months will be January 2021, Mr. D'Souza, so there you go. I would strongly, strongly suggest that you tell your counsel, you gotta do, get, get, get done whatever you gotta get done. Uh, 'cause as the chairman pointed out, I mean, I'm looking at it from a legal perspective that we, I don't even think we may not have the ability to do this, but if, even if we do, it's been a long time and, you know, something needs to be done, so, but, that's all I gotta say, so.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Callahan. Um, all right, with, with that, uh, with that being said, um, can we have a, a motion, um, for the variance extension request, um, for six months, uh, for 256 Trotting Park Road?
This is the clerk Sean Callahan, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to extend the variance request for 256 Trotting Park Road for six months.
I'd like to second the motion.
All right, motion by Mr. Callahan, uh, for the variance extension request for six months, seconded by Mr. McCarthy, um, can we have a roll call, please?
Uh, Vice Chairman Peck.
Um, approve extension, um, for six months from July 22nd, 2019.
Uh, Member Callahan.
Approve extension for six months.
Member Brier.
Approved.
Member McCarthy.
Approve a six-month extension.
All right, uh, Mr. D'Souza, you've been granted an extension, uh, we wish you the best of luck, sir. Um, thank you for, for coming on tonight and have a good evening, sir.
All right, thank you, take care, guys.
Thank you, have a good night. All right, uh, moving on to our other business in our agenda items, a minute for approval for May 11th, 2020, um, Mr. McCarthy, um, did you have a chance to review the minutes and, uh, and all that, sir?
I, I did, I did review the minutes and I did review the meetings, so I could have voted on this if you'd like.
Perfect, yes, that's, that's perfect, you did, you did watch the meeting and review the minutes, so I think, um, that, that's all up to par with, uh, open meeting laws and guidelines and all that. All right, um, with that being said, can we have, uh, a motion to approve the minutes for May 11th, 2020?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for May 11th, 2020.
Give me a second, please.
Mark Brier seconds the motion.
All right, motion by Mr. Callahan to approve the minutes for May 11th, seconded by Mr. Brier, can we have a roll call, please?
Vice Chairman Peck.
Uh, approve the minutes for May 11th.
Member Callahan.
Approve minutes for May 11th, 2020.
Member Brier.
Approved.
Member McCarthy.
Approve the meeting minutes for May 11th, 2020.
Oh, uh, the minutes for May 11th have been approved. Um, if there's no other, um, comments or any questions from the board, uh, we'll make a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Clerk Sean Callahan.
So, no, here and now, go ahead, give me a motion, Mr. Callahan.
Do they have any comments? No? Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second the motion.
All right, motion to adjourn by Mr. Callahan, seconded by Mr. McCarthy, um, all in favor, say aye.
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 Uh, any, say nay, the ayes have it, we are adjourned. Um, thank everyone for, for your participation tonight, um, have a good night and be safe. Thank you, everyone.
All right, everybody, be safe.
All right, be safe.